Start this recording, okay? So, welcome everyone and other people can join us. There'll be, I'll be showing a video, so if you have some time that you can check the banana bread if you need to. Or do whatever you want to do. Welcome to our Bible study, this online Zoom Bible study. Kevin was going to lead it, but he injured his shoulder. Pretty bad, he's in a lot of pain and he's not going to be able to join us to even get his fingers on the keys. Because it's just, he's just in a lot of pain. And, you know, he was really looking forward to this, so, but we're planning to do this once a week, you know, on Thursday at 2:00. It seems to be a good time for Kevin and hopefully other people. So, what I want to do is, you know, I didn't really have a chance to prepare too much because, you know, I was planning on Kevin leading, but we're doing this study, it's by Max Lucado. It's called "Anxious for Nothing." And it's just, it just seems like it's really timely, you know, for these days that we're living in right now. And so, I think we'll enjoy it, we'll have some really good discussions. I just want to open with a word of prayer. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you that you are in control. That you are in control of this virus, of this pandemic, this COVID-19, you are in control of it. And we pray, Lord God, you'll just fill us with your peace. Letting us know, Lord, that we can come to you, we can run to you, and find rest in the middle of the storm. I pray, Lord God, for this Bible study, I pray that it'll be fruitful. And I pray, Lord God, you'll just anoint our words, Lord, and give us that knowledge and wisdom that we need, Lord, to understand, understand what we're reading and what we're seeing. So, we thank you for that, Lord God, bless our time now, in your name we pray, amen. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be sharing a screen, can you guys still see me? I'm looking at another screen right now, but I will share a screen then. This is the beginning of the study, there's like an opening reflection, which is pretty good. It says, "When I, Jenna, was growing up, my dad had school drop-off duty. And without fail, every morning, as he slowed the car to a stop and we hurriedly unbuckled our seatbelts, grabbed our backpacks, and threw open the doors, he would give the same exhortation, 'Girls, have a good day, laugh a lot, learn a lot, and don't forget who gave it to you.' I never thought much about the phrase, growing up. My sisters and I would just robotically say it and then quickly yell, 'Okay Dad,' before slamming the car doors shut. Laugh, learn, remember. As a young girl, I naturally did just that. Laughing came easily, learning was fun, remembering God as the giver of my day. It wasn't always on my mind, but I never doubted God was with me and cared for me. But then I started to grow up, and with growing up came more responsibility, and with more responsibility came anxiety. It wasn't long before homework hours lengthened, friends hurt me, and I hurt them. Pretty soon, I was taking my SATs, learning how to interview for jobs, paying bills. Marriage brought deep joy, but also deep struggles. Cancer invaded the family and my heroes in life passed away. Babies were born, yet another level of worry. The older I got, the less I naturally lived my dad's exhortation to laugh, learn, and remember. The serious struggles of life squelched laughter. The joy of learning turned into pressure to achieve and remembering God. The anxieties of life pushed out thoughts of him. That's why it's hard for me to accept Paul's words in Philippians 4:4, rejoice in the Lord always, always? How are we supposed to do that with the pain and anxiety of life? In this session, we will see that rejoicing in the Lord does not mean we are in a constant state of excitement. We don't have to carry a guitar around and sing worship songs all day. It's not about plastering on a fake smile as we walk through a dark time. No, rejoicing in the Lord always is about a deep remembering. Remembering that the Lord is here always, remembering that the Lord is in control always. Remembering that the Lord is not only the giver of your day, but also the ordainer of every minute inside of it always. Remembering that amidst the pressures, pain, and anxiety in life, he is sovereign always. As we remember, I have an inkling we may discover the carefree child we used to be laughing a lot more, learning a lot more, and not forgetting who is with us through it all. So, can you guys hear me? So, I have a question for you. I want you to describe someone in your life who embodies what it means to rejoice in the Lord always. Can you think of somebody that that would always say that to you, you know, what does this person do or say to exude that heart, this attitude towards God?
And might I just suggest that if you're not talking, that you go unmute, because we still have a lot of background.
Yeah, we do. I mean, I could mute everybody, but then...
Sounds like somebody has their TV on.
Can someone turn their TV off, I guess, or, okay? Who is that?
If you're on the phone or if you're watching TV, can you please mute yourself?
Maybe they don't know where to mute it. Okay, so describe someone who exhibits that rejoice always in the Lord. You know, I have this mug that I got from the district, the West District, and it's an encouragement for us to always, you know, read this, rejoice always, pray without ceasing. You know, give thanks in all circumstances, for this is the will of God Christ Jesus for you, for Cessafonians 5:16 to 18. So, that's my reminder for us to rejoice in the Lord. So, you know, is there anyone in your life that exhibits that, you know, just, maybe they're just always joyful and it just, you know, nothing gets them down, and, you know, even if despite all the difficulties that might have in their lives, is there anyone like that, that you know, a friend, family member?
My mother, I know, this was years ago, when I was a child or teenager. My mother exhibited a lot of joy, and she passed that on to my brothers and myself.
Yes.
It's kind of a generation thing, but it's something that's learned, and you don't realize you're learning it.
That's true. That's a good point, that really is a good point. Anyone else? Björn, Björn?
I worked with a girl, a good friend of mine, and she would always come into work every day and be like totally over the top, like it used to drive me nuts.
Right.
Because she was so excited about everything and just so friendly. And sometimes I was just in a bad mood and I really didn't want to be that happy, you know? But she was always happy. And it was truly who she was, it wasn't anything fake or, you know, putting on airs, it's truly who she was. And, you know, yeah, it's amazing how some people, and I know she had a lot of stress and despair in her lifetime, she never really let it show, and she has a very deep Catholic faith. So, I attributed a lot to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It always seems like the ones that are rejoicing more, or they're more joyful, is the ones that are going through so much. But, you know, it's just, they know where their joy comes from. You know, I think a lot of our Homebound members are actually like that, you know, that they're joyful always. You know, despite setbacks. Yeah, I had a godly uncle that was always joyful. And, you know, he since passed several years ago, I actually did his funeral, that was really tough for me. Because he was like more of a father than my own dad, so, but he was just always joyful. And just anytime I needed to get like a pick-me-up, I would just go to his house and we'd read the Scriptures, and he was always laughing, always having a good time. So, I have a video I want to share, I'm gonna share a screen. See, I've only done this a couple times, so we're gonna, I'm gonna try to do this. Yeah. Okay, can you guys see this?
Yeah.
This is, this is Max Lucado talking about, this is the first session. So, it's like 20 minutes long, so it's really good. It'll make you really think, and then we'll have some questions afterwards.
Not getting any sound?
No. You have to unmute yourself.
Are we still muted?
They still don't have any sound.
Yeah, I don't have any sound.
Yeah.
Neither.
You guys have sound?
No.
No.
I think you have to...
No one can hear it?
No.
Really?
No, really.
I apologize for that. Let's see what's going on here. Go back one, two. Stop share, let's see what happened here. Don, yours is muted right now.
It was unmuted though.
Okay. Okay. She'll be able to, can you, so you can see it, you just can't hear it?
Right.
Yeah, you could probably hear it because you have, you have your headphones on perhaps.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, but I could, I'd still be able to hear it through my computer. Let's see here, because I have it on, allow participants to unmute themselves, allow participants to rename themselves.
You have your audio turned up, Scott.
Is my audio turned up? Yeah, my audio is turned up, yeah.
But, but do you have, do you have your headphones plugged in, you can hear it, but we can't? Get your...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, okay, I know you're talking about, duh, okay. All right, well, we'll share the screen again and I'll take out the headphones. And we'll start from the beginning.
It's a Bible study.
Jim says you gotta unplug them. Pull it out, plug it out.
I will, I will. All right, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear it now?
No.
Did you pull the jack out?
Yeah, it's out.
Yikes.
I'll turn it off, maybe.
Yeah, try that.
You guys don't hear it?
No.
Really? Huh. Still can't hear it?
Now he's coming on louder.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. Now we hear some of it.
Now we lost it again.
Can you hear it?
No.
No.
Take yours, I'll add it, see what that does.
Can you hear it now?
No.
No?
No. Yeah, that's a shame.
Yeah, this is good. We have to, I gotta figure this out here.
Okay.
Karen, do you know why this is not working? She'll be able to share a screen, it should be able, you guys should be able to hear it.
I know when you, when you first sign in, it'll say something like, like say, like, share with sound. Did you, but you probably, did you click on that?
I don't know, I'll have to take a look.
I haven't actually shown a video straight from, you know, the internet like that.
Right.
Parts have been embedded in our, in our class material. So, I don't think I can really...
I got it.
Okay.
Therefore, my brothers and sisters, whom I love and long for, my joy and crown, stand for, what'd you say, four to nine, I'm sorry. Rejoice in the Lord always, I will say again, rejoice. Let your gentleness be evident to all, the Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition with thanksgiving, present your requests to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. Whatever you have learned or received or heard from me or seen in me, put it into practice, and the God of peace will be with you.
Amen. Thank you, thank you for reading that. So, what is one thing that stood out to you from this passage?
Well, I think this verse six, "Do not worry about anything, but in everything by prayer, and I have supplication instead of petition. With giving thanks, let your requests be known to God." That's one of my favorite verses anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, I have it in the New Living Translation, it says, "Don't worry about anything. Instead, pray about everything, tell God what you need and thank him for all he has done."
Talking about that this morning, that's too hard, worrying and be a little bit anxious about what's going on in the world right now.
Yeah.
Scary.
Yes.
I, you know, this not, maybe not quite on topic, but yeah, it is. And I was, I was pretty emotional today anyways, I was nervous about teaching my Zoom class and, you know, and then I just thought, well, I'm gonna bake some bread. And I thought, I'm gonna get out my mom's cookbook, because I hadn't opened it up yet since I had gotten it from her house. And I opened it up and I tell you what, it was just, it was almost overwhelming for me, you know what I mean? Just to see her handwriting and the different recipes and stuff, because I don't know if it would have affected me the same, the same on a different day, but
Right.
The way things are, you know, with the unknown, and it really is difficult to keep... I don't want to say it's difficult to keep praying and giving thanks, but it's just a different, I don't know, it's more real now. It's just different, before when everything, life was good, back in, back in February in the good old days.
The good old days, yeah, isn't that interesting? It's like, you know, I was just looking and, you know, realizing that everything changed probably like, what, like March 15th? I think, like mid-March?
Well, we were, we were in church on March 15th.
Okay.
It was the next day.
That's right.
I was a king to church.
Right.
The 13th was when a lot changed too, because that's when the schools were finally closed.
Right.
That was a huge change for us at the time, because then we knew we probably wouldn't be seeing our grandchildren for a good long while.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's a joy for us, we just, we just FaceTimed with them a little while ago. So, if this had happened 20 years ago, that would not have been possible. In terms of look at what's good right now.
Right.
Now look outside, even if it was cold today was a good thing.
Right.
Gives me that peace that still the world is gonna keep turning, and we might have to be alone for a while, but I'm trying to keep a really positive attitude as much as possible. Finding ways.
Yes.
I went out with a piece of chalk and drew some smiley faces on the telephone pole outside, thinking maybe somebody passing by would, it would give them a smile.
Yeah.
Little girls next door, I've been putting teddy bears and stuffed animals in the window so they can see them from their window. I mean, there's little things we can do every day that lift us up as well as other people.
I try to do something every day for somebody else. Make a phone call? Send cards?
You guys still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Verse four. You know, it says, rejoice in the Lord, and then it says, I say it again, rejoice. Why, why is Paul saying that twice? What do you think?
We don't ever hear him the first time.
Okay.
Well, and he didn't go through the easiest life, what was he in prison three or four times or whatever?
Yeah.
Certainly. And the video talks about that, you know, that how is he rejoicing in the midst of this persecution that he was going through, and he's, he's in prison and, you know, his friends left him and everything, and, you know, it's almost like he's giving himself a pep talk. You know, it's just, that's what I always, I always think about, it's like, you know, rejoice in the Lord, I say it again. Maybe he's saying it to himself as well as everyone else, like, you know, I gotta say it again, rejoice. Or you're just not getting it, you know, rejoice, let me say it again, you know, rejoice in the Lord.
Don't we do that to ourselves sometime? Not necessarily the word rejoice, but if we're working on something, or if our word is joy for the day, a couple of times a day, you gotta say, I'm having joy, I'm having joy. Sometimes you just have to say it two or three times, and then you have it.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's true. Where did my screen go? Let's see. So, what does, what does rejoicing in the Lord mean in your life? And I talked about this a little bit, but have you found it difficult or natural to rejoice in the Lord? Then why?
I was gonna dinify with you, Karen, is I'm, not that I'm the best cook, but I kind of enjoy making pie or cake or cookies or whatever, I don't know why, but I get...
Sure, Dave enjoys that too.
So, how many of you guys do like, when you get up in the morning, you do like devotions, anything like that? Could you share some of the, some of the devotions you do? That bring you joy?
You mean specific ones or what?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, for example, for me, I read a number of things. I read something by Greg Laurie, his devotions I do. Heartlight has a devotion that I do. And the Passion Translation actually has devotion, not every day, but I think it's like every other day or something like that, so, just a number of, number of things that I read, you know, in the morning.
In Touch Ministries has a devotion that I get every day, and same with the daily bread, I get both of those every day.
Right.
Yeah, the daily bread, I would say that's one that, because you can get that online, the daily bread.
Yeah, that's true. I think a lot of the Homebound members, they, they read the daily bread.
Some of them use the Upper Room too.
That's true, yeah.
I don't use that one, but some folk do.
Lorraine Wirtz really likes her devotions. I'm going to get the new devotions to her, but maybe if I knock on the door and slide under.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know about anybody else that's a manner, but then I know she counts on that.
There's definitely a lot of devotions out there that, you know, just can bring us joy, you know? It just seems like sometimes you read these devotions and it's like, this is timely, this is something that I really need to hear this morning, you know? And so, it's a shame, because I mean, I watched a video with Max Lucado, you know, and it just really, it just brought joy. It really brought joy to my heart, and I was like, I can't wait to show this, you know, so...
I had this one called, it's called "Jesus Calling."
Oh, I love it.
Yeah, and I kept it, and today, on April 2nd, Philippians 4:19 is actually one of the verses they're referring to. So, how tall is that?
Yes, it is, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Wow.
Yeah.
So, stress-related ailments cost the United States billions of dollars every year. Why do you think the nation leading much of the world in infrastructure, education, democracy, and more, is also leading the world in anxiety?
That's a good question.
We, our oldest granddaughter here, Christopher's oldest, is a senior this year. She's not taking this, this spring very nicely.
Who can blame her, you know?
What they've been doing a couple of different times is coming to our backyard and talking, we sit and stand on the deck and they talk.
That's nice, they can do that.
Yeah, they came over last, yesterday afternoon and brought us billy bars. We've talked a half an hour, so...
And I think the answer to that question is the second question, it says, "Why would Americans suffer from anxiety more than people of lesser developed countries?" So, we answer that, we can answer the first one too.
Do we know that's the case?
Jim says we have too many toys.
We do have too many toys. We do have too many toys. That's true.
Worry about, worry about the next thing and can we keep up? Well, we don't, but young folks do. I mean.
I think sometimes we've forgotten who's in control. We believe we are.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a good example of we're not.
Well, I mean, just, exactly, you know, w- we're not gonna need toilet paper for the next year once this.
Oh no, under the bus with Amy.
Are you hoarding all the toilet paper? Cause I can't find it.
As, as a general rule, I mean, stories about people hoarding disinfectants and soap and else.
Haven't even seen any myself.
It's kinda like, I need to have that because that's the only way I can maintain control, which says, I'm, I'm in control, which not. I don't think.
Yeah, and, and so, in some ways, I think, you know, some of these, um, churches that are still having services, it's like, it's, in some ways, I'm looking at it like, they just want, maybe they just wanna have control because they could control that then, you know? It's like, you know, churches are essential and so, you know, they're gonna, they're still gonna have their service because they need to have control of something. You know, and, you know, I mean, I get it.
I don't think that's fair though. I mean, I don't think our religion, our church is any less important to us than we're meeting now.
Right.
We are doing a great disservice to our neighbors and that's certainly not a good example.
So say more Sandy about that.
Well, you know, they've been showing, and this, you know, I don't know where Louisiana, Texas or wherever, I mean, people like five hundred, a thousand people going to church.
Yeah.
And I personally don't think that's fair. I have to deny myself going to church. Why does somebody have the right to go to church? And so what if we spread the virus? That's.
I think that pastor was arrested.
Yes. What, what was it?
He was and then he got bailed out, so I'm anxious to see what he does this weekend. They bailed him out.
It'll happen again, no doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want him arrested, but.
No.
Common sense in all of this.
Right.
Yeah. Especially in our church. What's that?
What happens though if he says, I'm trusting God?
Yeah.
I mean.
It's, it's a tough one. It, it, it is a tough one. Um, you know, but we have to be smart too and, um, someone shared with me, um, uh, like, like a week and a half ago or something like that, because I was struggling with this and they said, well, you wouldn't, um, take your kids out in the middle of the road and just have faith in God that, you know, that God's gonna protect you. I was like, well, that's true. You know, we need to be smart, uh, about it then, because I mean, no, we have a, you know, we have a little older population in the church and, so we, we do need to be smart about it.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can't jump out a helicopter without a, without a, yeah, a chute and say, I'm gonna trust God. You know, I think, I think that they're just doing a disservice to their congregation, you know, when, when, when I was doing that because of all the lives that could be affected by this, it's just traumatic. You know, think about it, you know?
He's a healer, you know, and.
Yeah.
He was on television before, so maybe he's a healer. That's the way that congregation thinks, but.
Sure. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So it's, I think it's something that as a pastor, I'm always gonna struggle with, you know, I just, I'm just seeking the Lord and I honestly think that this is just a time for us to kinda shut down and like, just get closer to the Lord and, you know, to pray. Um, and just seek the Lord and his direction for, um, you know, and pray for healing for this, um, this virus. But yeah, it's, it's, it's always something, you know, for me, especially since I was in the Assembly of God, I was ordained the Assembly of God. One of their cardinal doctrines was divine healing, which I believe, you know, God can heal. But, uh, but you're right. I mean, there's, there's these evangelists out there or televangelists that are just like, hey, we're praying that, you know, Jesus is gonna heal us and so we can meet and, you know, and we're gonna be protected and everything and it's, it's, it's tough.
It is tough.
Hello?
Well, hello. So getting back to that question, you know, we can answer that now. Like, why do you think the nation leading much of the world in infrastructure, education, democracy and more is also leading the world in anxiety? You know? And I think we've, we've answered that. I think, I think it's just that we do have too many toys. We, we do have, uh, too many things to, uh, distract us. Um, you know, I don't know about you, but I can get on Facebook and I can be on Facebook for hours, you know?
Yeah. We have, you know, we, um, I, I don't wanna say we have hu- too high of an expectations, but I mean, we're in a, in a world where, you know, we have so many opportunities and we wanna take advantage of things and we wanna do better and we wanna provide for our families the best we can and lead the best life, but I, I, I think then in the midst of this, you know, in, in the way God is telling us all to just slow down, you know, look at, look at all of the positive things that will come out of this. Not just the technology of knowing how to use Zoom, you know, but, you know, parents connecting with their children. I know my granddaughter, her, her vocabulary, she'll be two next week and her vocabulary has just multiplied, you know, over the couple of weeks because she really has so much one-on-one time now with her brother and her mom and dad and there's so many things like that, that, um, you're seeing all these wonderful things happening because people are staying at home. Um, and not everybody, fortunately, unfortunately, not everybody can stay at home. But yeah, I mean, so there's definitely a sense of appreciation for the front lines of the people who are working and not the movie stars and the athletes.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, you're right. I mean, that's been taken away from us, you know? I mean, as far as like sports and everything. So, you know, for a lot of people, that's an outlet. It's not there anymore. And so something has to fill that. And I pray that it's, you know, maybe getting into the Word, you know, or spending time with your family or taking a walk, you know? So, um, who would like to read, um, Psalm fifty-six, three? And if someone could turn to Matthew six twenty-five to thirty-four, which is pretty appropriate, if I just talked about that the other day or yesterday.
Um, I have Psalm fifty-six, three.
Okay.
When I am afraid, I will put my trust in you.
Okay. Um, does anyone have Matthew six twenty-five to thirty-four?
Um, one second. Twenty-five, you said.
Six twenty-five.
Yep.
Six twenty-five. Through thirty-four.
Yes.
Therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life, what you will eat or drink, or about your body, what you will wear. Is not life more than food and the body more than clothes? Look at the birds of the air. They do not sow or reap or store away in barns. And yet your heavenly Father feeds them. Are you not much more valuable than they? Can any one of you by worrying a single hour add a single hour to your life? And why do you worry about clothes? See how the flowers of the field grow? They do not labor or spin. Yet I tell you that not even Solomon in all his splendor was dressed like one of these. If that is how God clothed the, clothed the grass of the field, which is here today and tomorrow is thrown into the fire, will he not much more clothe you, you of little faith? So do not worry, saying, what shall we eat, or what shall we drink, or what shall we wear? For the pagans run after all these things and your heavenly Father knows that you need them. But seek first his kingdom and his righteousness and all these things will be given to you as well. Therefore do not worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about itself. Each day has enough trouble of its own. Amen.
I love the end of that.
End true.
Don't worry about tomorrow.
Uh, who would like to read First Peter five, six to eight?
That's one of my favorites.
I got it.
Okay.
Six to eight, right?
Five, six, eight, yeah.
Humble yourselves therefore under God's mighty hand, and he may lift you up in new time. Cast your anxiety on him because he cares for you. Be self-controlled and alert. Your enemy, the devil prowls around like a roaring lion looking for someone to devour.
Thank you. So what prescription does each passage give for anxiety that we just read?
Give it to God.
Yep.
Yeah.
Freeze over to God. Yeah, give it to God.
The Matthew one, because I, we have been finding enjoyment in watching the birds in our yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Rabbits. So, and, and spring coming forth, the flowers and the. Springtime is a beautiful time of the year.
Wish the blackbirds wouldn't come though. I don't like the blackbirds.
I was talking to a young man the other day when I was out on a walk, just, he was at a, at a distance and he said, well, if this had to happen, at least this time of year, we can be out. If it hadn't happened in winter time, think about it.
We didn't really have a winter, so, but you're right. That's true.
You know, at least most days are nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the Pollyanna in me.
We need a Pollyanna.
Somebody else called me Mary Poppins. They didn't quite understand.
Okay.
I think it goes back to what we talked about in the beginning, you know, as far as we have to give up control. You know, and, and, and give it to God. All these passages are talking about, you're right, giving it to God and, and it's, you know, like the Matthew one, I mean, it's just, what is it you wanna, gonna accomplish anyway if you do worry? And that's tough. That's tough, but that's when we have to give it to God and say, you know, that I, I am worried right now, you know, and I have to give it to you.
I'm not.
You gotta cross on the door. I was looking for my, I was looking for my cross.
It's one of ashes.
Oh, yeah?
Hurt matchsticks. Jim had a dream. What, what was your dream?
I dreamed that everybody went back to, um, the time of Passover and when, in Egypt, when the.
They put the blood on the door.
They put the blood on the door to, to be safe. So I had a dream that if we put a cross on our door, everybody will be safe.
So we put a cross on our door and so we're okay.
Amen. Let's, let's, let's do it.
That's pretty cool. God already knows what it's gonna be anyway, so it's not, I can't worry about it.
It's just coincidental that it's pretty soon Passover time, so. And we're going to have times right now, right here.
How many of you have children that are still, um, outworking or family members that are still kind of out there on the front lines?
Yeah. My Jody works part-time over a giant. Her dermatology office is closed down. She works part-time over a giant in Littles.
Our son, our son and son-in-law are both still working. And so that's a, a concern and apparently at Nick's work last, well, probably two weeks ago now, somebody was tested positive. So last Thursday and Friday, he was home and of course, our daughter didn't tell us because she didn't want us to worry. She told us after they were sure he was, you know, he was out of the woods, but, you know, I pray at night for them and then try to let it go. One night I had a fairly sleepless night thinking about it and I thought, can't keep doing that, you know, so.
Uh, we have a son-in-law that works in a hospital, um, north of Detroit. So he is.
What does he do Sandy? What, what's his job there?
Physician, physician assistant. That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, they haven't quite, quite put him on the floor with the, um, the virus people, but he is working in the hospital. They, if, if they get in a pinch, then they'll end up. Now, it's not a Detroit hospital, but it's north of Detroit.
So how does the world teach us to cope with anxiety?
Take alcohol.
Did she say chocolate? Is that what you said?
Nothing wrong with chocolate. Unless you're diabetic, I shouldn't have that, but.
Yesterday, that was my comfort food.
Yes, yes. But yeah, someone, someone said alcohol, right? It's, you know, some people have, you know, gone to the bottle and I think.
A pill for that.
Yeah, pill.
Or smoking cigarettes.
Yeah.
Amazon.
That could be an addicting thing. That, that's, that could be an addiction.
It is.
The trick is just going there when you know there's something you have to get and not look at the other stuff, you know, that's.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, you don't wanna shop. You wanna make sure that you know what you, you wanna get. So how does the world's solution for anxiety differ from God's solution?
You're never satisfied. I mean, uh, we're satisfied because we believe in God, but you're shopping all the time, you're never satisfied. It's always the next buyer, the next buyer.
Yeah.
Giving it up to God is a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
You're talking about Amazon, it is.
Give it up. Give up Amazon.
Less calories too.
Give up the chocolate. It's lent.
You're right.
That's not the reason I eat it. It's getting low in this house.
I need chocolate late at night. I need to have chocolate and I need to have a glass of milk. That's, you know, that's, I have to have that pretty much every night. Eugene Peterson says, the fact that God followers don't get preferential treatment in life always comes as a surprise. Have you ever expected special treatment from God?
No. No.
It's an interesting question.
About it, if you ever asked God for something, that was expecting special treatment. Like even asking for protection for my son and my son-in-law. I guess I'm at, you know, there are all these people in the world and I try to keep that in mind and pray for them as well, but I guess when we do that, we're asking for special treatment. Even though that's not my intent, you know, because we're trying to give it to God, but.
I don't think so, because God says, bring me everything through prayer and petition always. So through your prayers, I don't think you're asking for special treatment.
Maybe not.
I mean, because all five of us are probably praying for our families and other families as well and for everybody, so. And we all pray believing that God's gonna answer each one of those prayers. And he will. Maybe not the way we're looking at it, but he will.
Yeah. One of my classmates in, in high school, I, um, was messaging a little bit with him the other night and he has a daughter-in-law who's working as a thoracic surgeon up in New York City right now on the front lines pretty much and it really makes you think when you know, I, I don't know this person, but I know, you know, the father-in-law and that that worry that he must have for his, his son and the whole family there. I don't know anybody that tested positive yet. I don't know if any of you do, but, or that was tested, but I think soon as we know that and it comes closer to home, it'll hit us even more than it has already.
That's true.
You know, it talks about rejoicing in God in all circumstances. If you want to rejoice in God regardless of your circumstances, it is crucial that you learn to trust in his sovereignty. What prevents you from trusting in the sovereignty of God?
My humanness?
Yeah, yeah. That whole struggle of, I want to be in control. Or you give it to him and about an hour and a half later, you're reaching the box and you pull it back out and you look at it and you think, oh, yeah. And then you have to give it up all over again.
Constant struggle.
Yeah. Let him have it.
So how does trusting in God's sovereignty affect the way you perceive life's trials?
Say that again.
How does trusting in God's sovereignty affect the way you perceive life's trials?
Everything comes to pass.
This too shall pass.
If it comes, it's gonna pass.
That's a good way to look at it. I never thought about that, but you're right.
The, the older, the older I get, the more it's, it's a trial and it's, I mean, my son's out in Washington and he's pretty sick and that's upsetting to me, but you know, God's got that. I can't spend my life sitting here spinning in a circle worrying about George. I mean, I could and probably 20 years ago I would have. But I think, I guess my faith has matured and my walk with God is much different than it was 20 years ago, so it's, I know it's gonna be okay. It might not make me happy, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be good.
Well, how did your faith mature? Like what, did you have to go through something for it in order for it to be mature?
Life, yeah, life, you, yeah, life, you just not always easy. You just walk through it and you come out the other side and hopefully you'll get a lesson. I think my grandmother was my lesson.
Okay.
I mean, that's how she lived. That's how she lived her life and so when large groups came, you just got on your knees and you pray. That's what she did.
Yeah, it always amazes me when I talk to some of the Homebound members that are like 90-some years old and they've lived the life and you know, uh, they've been through so much. You know, uh, there's a book by, uh, Richard Rohr that talks about the second half of life. And some people have gotten to the second half of life and it doesn't really matter their age. You know, but some people have gotten there quicker than others. Uh, and the second half of life is where things just don't bother you like they did before, you know? That life is too short, you know, and I think we get to, we get to that place through living life and, and everything, but some, some people just go through so much in a short period of time.
They do.
And, and maybe they're younger too. Uh, and it's just like, they are already in their second half of life, you know, because God has shown them things that would take years for some people to understand.
Hey, I noticed that Larry Bickert's on, but he's not on video, but he's on the call.
Okay.
Hey, Larry.
Hi, Larry. I hear the phone.
Yeah, oh, Jack's gone.
Well, I just, uh, uh, thank you for this. I just wanted to close with a word of prayer. Um, uh, you, you could better believe I'm gonna, I'm gonna figure out how to get this video playing through Zoom. I'm sure there's a way to do it.
What's the name of that video, Anxious for Nothing? Is that?
Anxious for Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Max Lucado. Um, the first session is free. If we wanted to purchase it, it's not that much money, but, um, the other sessions. Uh, but I know that, um, Kevin is, is working on some stuff. I think next time he's going to talk about Psalm 51, I believe, 1 to 7, I think. So I'm not sure if he's using the videos, so I'm not sure about that.
Pastor, did, if you're, if you continue doing, doing some of that, did you check, um, the, um, our library there, um, on the shelf across?
No, I haven't.
That should be where the video is.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, I'll certainly take a look.
The video should be there.
Okay.
With the classbooks.
And, and classbooks, yes.
Really? Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll certainly check.
If you do get one online, so you can transmit it, why don't you let us know and we can all maybe get into it somehow and just watch it sometime during the week.
Sure, sure, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll figure it out.
I think you're doing very well with this technology.
Yes.
The worship services are very nice.
Yeah.
I see other pastors that are doing like live streaming and, or I think this one pastor's doing like a children's chat uh, with her daughter, uh, reading the scripture and then she has like some kind of object lesson. And she's a mother and I think some of those motherly instincts are there because, I mean, she is just natural. She's a natural on camera and I'm not. I know that. I have to work at that, but you know, for her, it's just, she's just being herself and showing the dog and, you know, having banter with her daughter and, you know, it's, it works, you know, so I'm still learning.
Well, I was very excited about this today. I miss all of you guys. I miss seeing my.
Yeah, for sure.
Miss you guys too.
Family.
Yeah.
I really appreciate this. Everybody doing okay?
Yeah.
I'm doing okay.
Got enough toilet paper?
I, I do now. I do now, but I don't know, you know, a couple of weeks, I'm, I'm not sure.
One of my, well, my daughter sent me a message last night saying, one of my high school friends who's a widow, um, all by herself was getting to the end of hers and could I do anything about it? Well, she's up in Lebanon County and as we all know, we're not allowed to travel, but, um, I was in touch with another friend who lives close by and they sneaked a pack over to her and hung it on her door this morning, so. It all kind of worked out, but you know, I, Elena said to me, Mom, was it you? I said, no. I said, I was sworn to secrecy. But, um, I did tell Elena who it was, but they wanted to keep it a secret for her, so.
Has, has anybody spoken with Esther Alabak?
No.
No.
Okay. I just wondered, I was talking with Doreen and with Jeannie this morning and Doreen said something to me about Esther and I'm not sure who would be a good friend with her that would be checking in on her, because I know she's alone.
Yeah. I don't know much about Esther.
I don't either.
I, I hate to say that, but I don't, I, I mean, the other week when I was greeting, I was chatting with her a bit. She's sweet.
She's wonderful.
She went upstairs and she said, well, have a happy Halloween. Okay. So I, that made me think, well, maybe she, you know, she has a little confusion and there's a, a concern too, if she's alone like that, that. I, I know Barb was talk, Barb Tucker was talking to her at the top of the steps because they were talking about her birthday. So I don't know how well Barb, maybe because, is Esther an old, um, member of the church or a long time member?
Long time member.